June 9, I say the council be called to order with the clerk's stand and I'll play the lead. Set them on their side.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mayor, sorry about the change in arrangements tonight, but it probably everybody knows it's hot and the air conditioner at the other building is only half working. This is a much cooler option because it's a little closer.
First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the June 25 meeting. Take a motion to approve.
June 25.
It has been moved in second to approve the minutes from the June 25 meeting with the clerk please call roll.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Second item on the agenda will be statement of the bills paid in the amount of $249,903.86.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the statement of bills totaling $249,903.86.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the statement of bills paid with the clerk please call roll.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have a microphone, but anyway, are there any requests or comments from the public? State your name and address.
The last time I was in this building...
State your name and address.
Merle Land, 8311, Arkansas, Kansas City, Kansas City, Kansas City, Kansas City, Kansas City. This is called the last time I was in this building. Mayor of Tager, council member, staffer, and this lady is a gentleman. I appear today with half business, less voluntary organization of about eighty members, mostly small businesses. Parquet taxes are a very important consideration for all small businesses and particularly new businesses who might want to move here. Parquet taxes also are important for residential development. I would ask that the council hold the line when it comes to parquet taxes and your four unit budget. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any others? There being none, next item on the agenda will be consider mayor appointment of city attorney. And she is here present tonight, Lisa. Is it Dehaan?
Dehaan.
I knew it.
Very good.
Very good. So, and I had sent out to the council members her bio, so at this time, I would consider it a motion to make the approval.
Mayor, make a motion we approve Lisa Dehaan as the city attorney?
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the appointment of Lisa Dehaan as city attorney. Would the clerk please call roll.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Okay, now at this time, Lisa, we're gonna do it swear again.
Well, swear again, and then she may amend. I don't know if you would make any comments at all, but...
You can do that before or after. Why don't you do it after?
After.
Okay.
Just read it out? Just read it out? Okay. I, Lisa Dehaan, am certified and I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas. If faithful and discharge the duties of the city attorney for the city benefits of Kansas, I will be glad.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you can make your statement if you'd like.
Well, I'm very excited to learn about our new city and to do whatever I can to help the city move forward in all of the projects that you have done. So I'm very honored by the appointment and I'll do my best for you.
Lisa, I know that they got that. Do you mind just to tell for the audience a little about your history and past, just briefly?
Okay, sure. I actually have some windup county roots. My first law clerk position in law school was with Blake and Ulrich. My first job out of law school was with the Windup County DA's office. I then went to the Johnson County DA's office, then worked for the NCAA for about 12 years as an enforcement representative investigating schools, also worked with student athlete green statement, which is eligibility. When they had the audacity to move to Indianapolis, I then started working for the city of Lenexa on a part-time basis, and then I've also been working with Ellis Rainey and the city of Shawnee for the past 10 years.
We'll let you sit right here in the hot seat that you reserve. I've got your body. I know we're a little tiny in here, so... Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda will be consider mayor's appointment of Edwardville Cemetery Board, Mike Wheeler. Do you have information in front of you?
Mr. Wheeler is here with us tonight. If you haven't had a chance to meet Mr. Wheeler, a long time resident here in the city. As you all may recall from the last meeting, he is also working on kind of a new church plant and doing some work in the community there. Also serves on the Autumn Fest Committee with us, so great to talk to you. See if you'd like to become more engaged in our community. He's obviously a citizen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve. I now hold Mike to the secretary of government.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the appointment of Mike Wheeler to the cemetery board with the clerk please call roll.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Mike, thank you very much. We appreciate volunteers a lot around here, and it seems like we're doing really well. For a long time, we had a lot of difficulty getting volunteers. We seem to be getting it to place right now that we fortunate enough that people will volunteer for those decisions.
I'll chase fill the role, but I can't even tell what I'm looking for to...
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda will be consider special event retail permit application for Bonner Springs Edwardville Area Chamber of Commerce for cereal malt beverages for the Edwardville Autumn Fest event September the 22nd.
Mr. Mayor, this is essentially a duplicate application for the special event retailer permit from last Edwardville Days.
Okay.
That was held in April of 2017. What is attached is the map of where the beer garden area would be exactly the same as the Edwardville Day Festival last year before they changed back to Autumn Fest, so it's essentially just the entire parking lot of the community center. Really, the only difference between this application and what you've seen in the past for Edwardville Days applications is the chamber president, Jeff Jones, was actually the official applicant who received the background check and all that rather than the previous chamber director. We did the standard check on him, and he is good to go as far as the police clearance is concerned. So with that, the staff recommendation is to approve the cereal or special event retail permit for the Edwardville Autumn Fest event to take place September 22nd, 2018, and to waive the $50 daily, or excuse me, the $25 daily fee. I will point out that our new executive director of the chamber, Ms. Jen Andrews, is here in case you have questions for her.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we approve the application permitting the beer yard for the Autumn Fest, the application fee of $50, but the daily fee waived.
Second.
I won't repeat that motion, but the motion's been made to approve the permit application for Edwardville Chamber of Commerce or Edwardville Autumn Fest event September the 22nd. Would the clerk please call roll.
Stikes?
And to waive the daily, and the daily fee.
Yes. Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is conduct a public hearing to consider changes in redevelopment district plan for Village South Edwardville Redevelopment District.
Mayor, I'll give a brief introduction, and I'm gonna turn it over to Tyler Ellsworth of the special counsel. We are, as published, conducting a public hearing tonight to consider a substantial change in redevelopment district plan for Village South and Edwardville Redevelopment District. After the hearing is closed, we'll be asked to consider ordinance number 997. That officially adopts that substantial change and moves this project forward, this change in the TIF plan. The overall district is not changing as far as the size of it, but how it's laid out within the district, basically from two areas to four areas. I think you're familiar with most of the overall project itself, but we can certainly answer that. What I would suggest is ask Tyler to come up to give any further details and then open your public hearing, take any comments. We can either address those during the public hearing or if you can postpone the public hearing, and then if there are other discussions that the council wishes to have after the close of the public hearing, we can conduct those. With that, Tyler, I will turn it over to you. As you know, we do have John Monson with us, the developer, and Evan Fritz with Postality, who is their legal representation. They may be here to answer questions. I do know that we have Greg Kimble in the audience with us tonight as well, so...
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As Mike said, Tyler Ellsworth with the law firm in Pitek Rock, the city's special counsel for Village South project, in particular the TIF and CIT proceedings. As Mike also indicated, we have on the agenda a public hearing to consider changes to the TIF district plan, see, and as the hearing is concluded, then consideration ordinance modifying the TIF district plan. And as explained, we're changing from two TIF project areas all within the district as currently laid out and essentially carving out four project areas instead of the original two. And there are two reasons for this. One is the hotel, which as we've been discussing over the last few months, originally planned as two sort of mid-rise hotels, and now a single hotel, and that will be in one of the four new project areas. The hotel, the event center, the hotel restaurant will have their own project area. The other components of what were the original project areas were fast food, convenience stores, the retailers, those will be in two separate project areas. And so what that does, sort of segregating them out that way, so the hotel, the conference center, the restaurant are in their own project area, mixing cleaner for TIF bonds. We could say that the revenue, the TIF revenue generated from this particular project area are security bonds. The other revenue, the fast food, convenience, the retailers, those will be paid to the resident bond at least at this point. So it cleans things up from that perspective. It also allows us sort of a means to offer a fresh 20-year TIF project clock, because what we'll do is we will have a project plan approved for everything, all the components that we approved a year and a half ago now. And the clock has already started to run when that project plan is approved, which is actually October 2016. We intended back before you, as council, over the next few weeks, to request approval of project plans for these new project areas that were requiring before we set the clock for 20 years.
And that would include all four project areas, correct?
It would include out of the four.
Okay.
Existing project area one...
Which ones excluded?
Project area four, which is roughly the southern half, southern third of the site, which we don't have a project plan approved for because of this, it would be different kind of where we was 2016, early 2017.
So will there be, there could potentially be another TIF for that area?
Yes.
That would start a new 20-year clock on that portion only?
On that portion, and that would be sometime in the future. It could be next year, it could be, you know...
Right. But that clock hasn't, it won't be resetted this next?
Correct, because it wasn't started, it won't be resetted.
Okay.
Effectively, the one was previously TIF area one, which is where the clock started, is now one, two, and three.
Got you.
Four is still four.
One was divided with three.
Yes.
Four was not involved in one.
Correct.
Correct.
There's a slight shift there, but it's not super perpendicular there.
Okay.
So Mayor, I would say at this point, we would go ahead and call the public hearing, open the public hearing, take any testimony, whether it be the applicant or people in the audience, and then you can close the public hearing, and we can move it from there. We didn't open the public hearing.
All right, so at this time, the floor is open for any comments from the public, whether it's the applicant or anyone else.
Yeah, we'll need a motion.
Okay, that's right. We need a motion to go in and open that public hearing. I was thinking we had to do it earlier, but I remembered we gotta do it until now.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we open a public hearing to consider changes in the redevelopment district plan for the Village South and Edwardville Redevelopment District.
Second.
And moved in second to open the public hearing to consider changes to the redevelopment district plan for the Village South and Edwardville Redevelopment District. Would the clerk please call roll.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Okay, now you may make comments. State your name and address.
Gary Harbinger, 11030 River View. I just had a question about the rezoning we did on, from two to three, and what areas was involved in that? Can you clarify on that again, but then what does that have effect on what projects can go in on that property, or on which locations, districts, or whatever you're calling them?
Are you talking about the recent rezoning where we went from C2 to C3?
Yeah.
Yes. It won't have any impact on that, the area that's zoned, that became C3, which is the hotel site, Hotel Convention Center site, which includes...
So that's area one?
That's area two, basically.
Area two.
Right.
Okay.
So it doesn't impact anything of the zoning?
And that just cleaned it up, that we weren't gonna be operating on a special use permit?
Correct. Yeah, made it conforming use instead of a...
Nonconforming with the special use, which for a lot of different reasons, that's a good thing.
Right.
Okay, no one else has any comments, or will they entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So move?
Second.
And move in second to close the public hearing with the clerk please call roll.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
And then now you're looking for a motion to approve 997 and amend, which amends 965 and 973.
Correct.
Unless you haven't made comments.
All right, we're ready for the... Make a motion to adopt city ordinance 997, which is, which changes the redevelopment district plan for Village South and Edwardville Redevelopment District and amends ordinances 965 and 973.
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt ordinance number 997, approving changes to the redevelopment district plan for the Village South Edwardville Redevelopment District and amending ordinances number 965 and 973.
Well, I just have one, and it's actually, I'm gonna verify with Tyler whether governing body, there's this language, as you know, between governing body and city council on this particular item, whether you would prefer governing body, which would equate the mayor with the original body.
Yes, so I will vote on this.
Yes. It may be an overkill, but it's clean, so now...
Would the clerk please call roll?
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Okay.
One step closer to the building.
Big time.
Okay. Next item on the agenda will be consider ordinance number 998, amending Appendix A fee schedule for the code of ordinances, amending fingerprinting fees for Edwardville Police Department.
I'm going to let Chief Mathis handle this particular item.
Staff recommends the adoption of ordinance 998.
Fire alarm, you gotta look. I got nervous.
The adoption of 998, amending the Appendix A fee schedule, the code of ordinance, which amends specifically the fingerprinting fees for the city of Edwardville. And you have the background information in your packet, which explains, number one, we charge the lowest fee in our entire area. $5 doesn't cover, you know, one minute of the process. We have, currently, we have a very steady stream of folks who come in for fingerprinting, just the walking. They're not necessarily from Edwardville. Nurses, teachers, we're one of the services that, we're one of the agencies that provide the service. We were notified by the state that 48,000 workers in two different occupations, childcare and nursing home facilities, anybody employed there will have to be fingerprinted. Our agency's gonna be on the list that provides the service, and thus, they expect us to be inundated. So us and everyone else who offers the service as well. Thus, we did some quick research, surveying the agencies around, and we think the $15 is that median that we need to target. Doesn't necessarily cover all our fees. In some cases, they bring the fingerprint cards, in other cases, we have them in stock. So this will at least help alleviate some of the costs of the demand. Again, we, every week, we have a steady stream. That doesn't include our folks who are mandated by the court to come in for their fingerprinting after conviction. So again, this will, this will put us in some reasonable average for the fee and help cover some of the expenses of increased service provided, so recommend the adoption.
Thank you, Chief.
My understanding, anybody who works in pharmacy now has to do that, and also anybody who sells insurance has to do it, so it's going to be a high volume.
High volume, yes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion we adopt ordinance number 998, adjusting the fees for the fingerprinting.
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt ordinance number 998, amending fees for fingerprinting. Would the clerk please call roll? Any question? Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Sorry, what are the surrounding agencies that are currently doing this? What are their charges?
Well, I'll let the captain do the research, so captain's short, has an idea.
Generally, like the chief said, we are at the lower end of that. I queried Johnson County, Shawnee, Marion, Kansas City, Kansas, Bonner Springs. I think the highest was Marion, a $25 for an individual who was not a citizen of their city. They just took anybody, and I think that Bonner Springs, they don't charge at all. That's, that was just a quick conversation I had with their captain. He said they do have a fee schedule, but his practice is they just don't charge it, which that's obviously their practice. So if I have questions, I can do my best to answer them.
You're gonna lose business because of the code of honor?
People actually, I, my own personal experience, I do know that there are folks that come from Kansas City, Kansas, or other cities because our volume is lower. They come to us to provide that service because it's not as congested as other larger cities. So it's a convenience for them, it's not so much a convenience for us, it's just a service that we provide. And based on the new statutory changes, we're gonna see more, it's all there's to mention.
Does that go to a national data base, like, I mean, that's out there?
Yeah, yeah, it's papers, it's fingerprinting, it's...
Do the fees stay here in the city?
Yes, ma'am.
For the question, for the clerk please.
Stikes?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
All right, now we're into advisory board, Mike.
No, I didn't have it. I may have some advisory boards. I'll do Mike first. The, if you didn't get a chance to notice today, the trail, new section of the trail has been paved, so the family touches will be backfilling along the trail. I'm gonna say trying to establish some grass. And if you've been back there, it's very sandy soil, but they did a great job of getting good compaction on that for a trail, so we should be able to open that up here in very near the future. We've got some signage and the things to finish it up, but that, including that project, I think it's gonna be well, well received. I, I took a chance a couple of weeks ago, took an opportunity and walked it before we got everything down and had a couple of chances to be there. Part of the reason, our public works director, Nadia, tonight, she was out there at 6:30 this morning, in the heat and everything else, plus the office issue, and so she was kind of overloaded or overheated, and so said, go home and get some air conditioning, but we're happy to have that. On new hires, our person, which is our customer service clerk, will be starting around 23rd of the third. Our wastewater foreman position, which will probably work the primary focus on wastewater, will start around the end of the month, I believe, on the 30th. And we have kind of retained a part-time person who works for the city a little late and operates their right of way mower, who's gonna come work for us on, you know, some hours during the summer times, so we can get that out even more. I know we were out with it today, but he's an experienced operator, and of course, there's plenty of things to go on a week and poke. His time may be, you know, late afternoon, early evenings, and Saturdays, just because he is a full-time employee within other community, but he does have that. We'll put him on as a part-time employee for purposes of insurance and some other things of that nature. So hopefully, you'll see more activity by that piece of equipment out there on the road. As you know, it puts a lot of stuff out, so one of the things is we'll probably have some, one of our two guys following along, making sure stuff's not left out on the road, as I understand, that's a lot of great. Other than that, we are certainly in the midst of budget season. We will, our newly appointed city attorney will be working on, we have a request for a franchise agreement, which one of the things she brings to us is a lot of knowledge of franchise agreements for, basically, it's MCI, Verizon, for putting in some fiber optic type services in the community. But we haven't had a new franchise, per se, a different provider sometime, so there's a lot of things we looked at, our skill set there. I don't think I have anything else other than that, other than it's hot. We will be replacing an air conditioning unit on the building over there. You know, it's 39 years old, so, you know, it's not something we necessarily want to do, but we know we'll be in that building for a bit longer, but, so we'll be replacing that. It's about a $9,000 purchase, and it's all said done for one unit, so it's, it wasn't planned, so to speak, from a budget standpoint, but it covered out the building, building maintenance operations, but you'll certainly see that come across on the bills paid here in the next few weeks, hopefully sooner. That's one of those bills I hope we get really soon, but it'll probably be at least a week out on equipment, so I don't know if you have other things?
I did not. Chief Mathis?
The only thing I have to report is we broke a record, we're extremely busy, it's been eye-opening. We do have our department meeting, we have a department meeting usually at the end of June, but scheduling-wise, but we'll meet this Friday with our full department in this room. Stand for inspections, we just go through a number of things, and what we're trying to accomplish strategic-wise, and where we're at, measured, those sorts of things. So we have this Friday, so everybody here, we have our, we, about every three years, we kind of have to redo our photo in the office because we have personnel changes, so we'll be doing that as well this Friday, so that's, that's our news.
Thank you. Take it, Chief Burr.
Things good.
Now, Mr. Burr, you just got back from executive fire officer training, correct?
Yes, sorry. Spent two weeks in Maryland.
He's in a three-year FFO program. Okay. They're gonna have to teach a little more of presentations.
I, I, I said so, there was no.
No incidents?
No incidents at all.
That's amazing, no police incidents?
Oh, there was plenty of activity.
Activity?
Yes.
Well, good, I'm glad there was no major.
We had burned anything down, though, is that right? Nothing.
Nope.
Major medicals.
Nobody blowed off any fingers or anything?
No fireworks stands violations that we investigated? No.
The two fireworks stands, we have two, I, I, you know, we can license up to three by ordinance. They've been here for a number of years, they know the routine, they know what they have to do, the fire department's very good about a pre-inspection and inspection during, sometimes during the event, kind of just kind of a random, and, and we probably never had problems with people standing on or allowing people to shoot fireworks nearby, or, you know, any of those things. Of course, there's always people who shoot fireworks, and people who don't like to shoot fireworks, but that, that's, you know, well before my times.
I'm glad you brought that up. The one, the one fireworks stand that was to the east of K-32 on that north side, at the old lot where that business was, you know what I'm talking about?
Of 98?
Pardon me?
98.
That, where that old business was.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad they had it there, because that grass was about that high. I don't know who owns that property now. Is it the same owner, or is it just?
It's a new, at person, you're talking about the old auto lot?
Correct, yes.
A person has bought that.
Looks like somebody cleaned up.
And he's, he's in the process, he is, we've had a number of discussions with his architect that they're talking about, because some of the, that old building is in the floodplain, parts of it, so trying to reoccupy it is going to be a challenge, so they've been looking at basically clearing the lot, building a new building on there. He is in the car sales business, but understands that he'll have to make improvements, a number of improvements to the building, that occupying it as is really isn't an option.
It's exciting to hear.
You know, he's trying to figure out what the cost, you know, how much does it work to do what he wants to do there, but.
Sure.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Lisa, and, like, Garrett's in here, he was out of trouble. Anything on Homestead Motors?
I'd not have anything more from Homestead Motors. The last sales tax, I, I think we told you that, and of course, they closed end of May, so we would not see until this July report.
Right.
That would be the, that would be the next report.
I just meant on new oxygen or anything?
Have not, I, I did talk to one individual who has auto sales in, in the Missouri side, but he has a Kansas license as well, that was interested in reaching out, so I tried to connect him.
Well, maybe if the owner of 98.
Yeah, we, we suggested that to him.
Okay, so maybe you can put that relationship together, make that work out.
I, I, I do know, I put, I know Greg is here tonight, and they, they are aware that that facility is available to, obviously, it's in what, line up EDC, that's, you know, it's kind of on, I wouldn't say on the margin what they do, but I mean, they, they try to place all types of buildings, but they know it's available at this point, if the right client comes along, so they, very good to help us as well.
And then, where are we at on trash? I came down, obviously, from Riverview down to the meeting here.
Yeah.
And both sides of the road are lined with trash. We're mowing over them like we said what was gonna happen, and turning them out in pieces into thousands, and now we're doing that exactly what's said would happen. And where are we at as far as community service? We talked about it multiple times, who's looking into it? I'd like to have something that, that shows what, what we're doing, to see what other cities are doing with their community service people, and start to utilize that.
It, it, honestly, it has dropped off the, the radar a little bit, but we will get back on that, so.
Devon Ball has sent some updated activity logs as part of what their litter pickup has been, and I can, I can forward that to the.
To the council, except that.
I kind of separate the two. You know, the 435 is, you know, its own animal, and I'm kind of more talking about our residential streets and.
Sure.
We talked about the gateway into our city, well, 110th Street is absolutely that, and we're talking about putting in a multimillion dollar development and investment in the city for people to come in 110th Street from KCK. I think we should make sure that it looks presentable. I will say, we have to put together some preliminary plans, that's what a, kind of a citywide, if you're taking effort would be. A lot of that would be contingent on how we pay for that, and originally, the idea was it would come out of the, the solid waste fund, and with the changes to the, the fee structure in the solid waste fund, we're just kind of waiting to see where that, how healthy that fund balance is. Well, that's why I'd like to entertain ideas that where we don't pay for it.
Right.
For example, using people that have been issued community service, and they have to work off.
I would just, yeah, I, I would just add, relative to the, to trash services as a whole, and I know this won't fix all the problems, but we did reach out, I reached out to, to K-State through their, through their MPA program, and kind of environmental sciences, there's some funding through KDOT, I mean, won't necessarily go out and pick up trash, but look at, so they're looking for ideas, and to maybe use us as almost a, a bit of a test on, you know, where the cause, what causes it, what, you know, what are solutions, what are, maybe kind of some study area. Now, again, that's gonna be KDOT Radaway, not necessarily local, local streets, but we are.
For sure, we want to turn away anybody.
Right. I mean, it, you know, maybe generate some new ideas we hadn't thought about.
Right.
The, the other thing, I should have mentioned this earlier, is when you said 110th Street, made me think of that. So I, I think I've talked to you in the past about STP, which is Surface Transportation Program for enhancements to 110th Riverview and the intersection there. We've been going through the rounds, I, we have a meeting this Thursday, I think we'll make some final decisions. I would say we're on the bubble to basically modify our request to a $3 million request. We've worked with the developer of, of the campus center, obviously, it's a senior developer, but, but that took a project and assisted some of the cost shared on the road out there, so I think we have a possibly a little bit better than average chance of getting amounted to funding. Probably our biggest, I hate to say this, but our biggest challenge is there are projects in there to fund new buses, and there's a number of us that feel that buses is, not that they're bad, but they have a whole separate funding source for air quality mitigation, they have federal funding, they have right fear fees, and there's a number of us on that committee that feel like surface transportation's about building roads and bridges in capacity, and it's not, not that air quality's not an important piece, but that that's not the right funding source for it. And they have about $2 million worth of requests in there, which quite honestly, if it wasn't in there, we'd probably fund at least another one or two more community projects. It, it helps us a little bit, but really, probably funds down a line a little bit.
Who can, we help on that, if we're on that level? Who's, who can we have, what attack that can help us?
Well, it's a voting committee, I am on the voting committee. We have our friends at both Bonner Springs and line, at, at the government, that are very supportive of the project, and are helping along with that.
At the UG, who is it?
Brent Thompson is the, is the person who's the UG appointee, and then Lydia, who is the traffic engineer person, I think sits on the TAF, what's called TAF, Transportation Alternative Program, which also, Tami from our office serves on that, so you're on one of the committees.
Back to the history committee.
And then, his grandeur serves as co-chair of TTPC.
Actually, I had one of the Missouri members of that meeting come up to me after the last one, saying, you are right on the bubble, and we'll see if we can't push it over, so it, Mike must be.
Did he say which way?
And Mike must be making a lot of noise, because, you know, he painted very positive, he thought it was a good project. So cool, but it's, it's pure.
I mean, they're, they're asking, I mean, you know, I, I don't want to sound like I'm beating up a bus, but they've got $8 million worth of requests in the overall funding program between Missouri and Kansas, and, you know, and they said, well, we'll give up a half a billion. Well, we had to give up over a billion, so in comparison, from what our request is full funding versus what we're likely to get, actually, probably 1.5 million almost, and so, you know, my position there is probably not going to be favorable to buses, not because I hate buses, but again, I think surface transportation is about surface transportation, CMAC, which is congestion mitigation, air quality is about buying alternative fuel buses, and, and, you know, electric buses and things like that, and I realize they're expensive, you know, six, eight hundred thousand a unit, I understand that, but that'd be our position, that's.
Now, this didn't turn out, this wasn't a tri-city application?
Yeah.
This is just strictly Edwardsville?
Strictly Edwardsville, yes. Now, there is some funding in there for signalization at 110th and I-70. That may be one thing that gets cut, but I will say, just the discussions with Brent at the UG, we've said to him, hey, look, if we can keep this in the project, and maybe some funding through the UG, I mean, it's, it's not a lot of money. It just keeps it more regional, right? They look at these projects, what's the regional impact? I mean, if you're just paving a local street, you know, they're not gonna give you anything for it, so how's it affect region, which is why we try to type partners in, but basically, each community only gets one project, even though they may spend multiple ones, they ultimately get it down to one, so if we went in with multiple people, and they also, UG obviously adds a number of projects, it doesn't want to work out well, so. Just want to let you all know that, I mean, I, it's good, I think we're, you know, I, there's, until the final things are done, it's not done, but we're better than, I, I really wasn't sure we needed to be above the, the funding line, and right now, we're on the funding line, so hopefully, we'll be able to stay on top of it and get our project done.
Cool. Good work.
Okay, welcome aboard, Lisa, and with that, we are adjourned.